Good afternoon. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome you to the May 10, 2018, meeting of the City County Planning Board. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today's meeting is being broadcast live by TV 13. It will be rebroadcast at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow morning and again at 4:00 p.m. Sunday afternoon. Our first order of business today is consent agenda. These are items for which the petitioner is requesting withdrawal or continuance, or items for which the staff has recommended approval, and no one has signed up to speak in opposition. For our public hearings today, each side will have a total of 12 minutes. There is no rebuttal period. Once the public hearing is closed and the board goes into work session, no one is permitted to speak unless a planning board member asks a question. For general use district zoning, the board must consider the full range of uses allowed in the zoning district. Therefore, the petitioner may not refer to specific use of the property. For special use district zoning, however, you must be very specific about the details of how the site will be developed and the uses proposed for the site. Items under Section B of their agenda require final action by either the City Council or County Commissioners. As such, votes taken today will be forwarded to those bodies for their consideration. If you're addressing the board today, we will need your name, address, and zip code for the record. And before we get into the approval of the minutes, I believe Ms. Dunleavy had a correction to the May, uh, April 26 meeting.
Yeah, for the work session. Item four, we're talking about the area plan process. I just wanted to clarify that the recommendation I made for the Reynolda Road-Northern Beltway interchange area, I would like to just make sure that that's changed to the interchange area between US 52 and Reynolda Road.
To all the air changes in that corridor.
Yes.
Right, okay. Is that the only change?
That was it.
Okay. With that correction, any other corrections or additions to the minutes?
No, sir.
If not, I'll entertain a motion.
We approve.
Second. Motion, Mr. Grubbs. Second, Mr. Leake. Any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, now I'll call on Mr. King to present our consent agenda.
Okay. First item is item B1, zoning docket W-3367, and this is a request to rezone about a half an acre from RS9 and highway business to highway business special use for the uses motor vehicle repair and maintenance and offices. And you can see the subject property there in yellow on the east side of Nicholson Road, north of Kernersville Road in the Five Points area. So the large building to the left of that image is the King Plaza Shopping Center. You've got some various businesses on the north side, north and south side of Kernersville and Waltham Street there. To the north, you've got some scattered single-family homes on RS9 and then Hall Woodward Elementary to the top of the image there, zoned IP. And this is the site plan that's been submitted with this request. So if you can see the zoning line, it is running diagonal through the middle of the property. The left-hand side of this image is currently zoned highway business. The right-hand side is currently zoned RS9. What's being proposed is about a 1,700-square-foot motor vehicle repair and maintenance building with three garage bays, which you can see here, this would actually be on the south side of the site. The site will connect to the existing Five Points Tire and Auto in this location here. There would be one new driveway connection onto Nicholson Road in this area. Nine parking spaces will be installed to meet the parking requirements to the front and side of the building, street yard along Nicholson, and then a Type III buffer yard would be required to be installed along, adjacent to the RS9 property to the north. Stormwater would be located in that northeastern corner. Also in this area, staff recommended a wooden opaque fence, and the petitioner did provide that, so we commend them on that to help provide a better transition of that residential property to the north. In reviewing this, the area plan does recommend commercial for this site, however, it does mention NB and LB as being appropriate districts. When we reviewed this, we believed that this HBS request was reasonable for a few reasons. One, we worked with the developer. The original request had the garage bays facing north for that home that's closest there to the north. We did work with the developer to get the building oriented differently so those garage bays are phased away from that home and out towards Nicholson Road. Second, as I mentioned to you, there is a Type III buffer with a six-foot-tall wooden opaque fence along that property line with the adjacent residential property there. And third, although there are two single-family homes across Nicholson, they are zoned highway business general use. So given those considerations, staff believes this is a reasonable request, and we would recommend approval of W-3367.
No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Say no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
We approve.
Second. Motion, Mr. Grubbs. Second, Mr. Leake. Any discussion?
I have a question about the wooden opaque fence. Would it be possible for there to be razor wire on top of that fence?
I've never, I haven't seen it on top of a wood fence. I don't know that we have a condition that specifically...
Because I noticed you have a condition that mentions chain-link fencing.
Right.
And so I was wondering if it was possible to put a razor wire, and I just think that would be inappropriate.
I'll defer to the petitioner. If they would be, if the board wants to entertain a condition to prohibit that, it would be up to the petitioner.
Well, sir, if you want to address, just come up here, please, and give us your name and address. Is he coming?
They're still discussing.
Okay. We just need your name and address, please, sir.
Edward Malone, 6102 O'Brien Court, Greensboro, North Carolina 27410.
Thanks, sir.
Now, there's never been any thought of putting any kind of wire or anything on top of the wooden fence, you know, that would kind of, you know, there just isn't no thought there.
So no problem if we put a condition of no wire, then you're okay with that, right?
Yeah, there's no consideration to that.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, Ms. Dunleavy?
No.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right. We have a motion. If you want to amend your motion.
I'd be glad to amend it to add the condition that no razor wire be placed on top of the wooden opaque fence.
Second. Any further discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay. Next item is B2, it's zoning docket W-3368, and this is a request to rezone about three-quarters of an acre from RS9 to general business special use over on Sedg Garden Road. The applicant has requested this be continued to your June meeting. They got that request in by the automatic deadline, so this is continued to June, and no vote is needed on this item. Next item is C1. This is subdivision 2018-023. This is a 27-lot subdivision in RS9 zoning on about 16 acres. This, two main roads in this area, if you can follow the mouse, all of it church is in this area, and then Yackinville Road, that intersection's in this area. Heritage Oaks Lane, the first phase of that subdivision is located here, and what you're looking at today would essentially be the second phase of that subdivision. So again, to get you oriented, Heritage Oaks Lane is coming in from the left side of this image. That public street would be continued to serve these 27 new lots. Again, this is not a PRD, so we're not looking at open space or buffer yards. It's a conventional subdivision. So all of the lots are at least 9,000 square feet in size and at least 65 feet in width. And I will add that most of these lots are substantially larger than 9,000 square feet in size. It does meet UDA requirements, and staff would recommend approval of this subdivision request.
We approve. Motion, Mr. Grubbs.
A second.
Second, Mr. Leake. Any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is D1, it's PBR 2018-01, and this was for utilities and RS40 zoning. The applicant has requested this be continued to your June meeting. They got it in by the deadline, so it's automatically continued to June. No votes needed on this item.
If we want to do item four, I mean, if there's no one signed up for that, I figured that could be handled on consent, too, the parkland.
Sure. I'll let David come up and address that item.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this next item does require a public hearing. It is for the sale or transfer of parkland. In this case, the Long Creek Golf Course was purchased by the city, or taken over by the city, and is becoming a park. There are, there's a piece of land that's shown in yellow on this map that is actually part of the property but is completely surrounded by land owned by Hubbard Realty. It's one of the holes of the golf course. It's only served by a 10-foot wide access easement. This transfer would exchange that piece, which is less than two acres, for a larger piece of land just to the west, shown in blue on this map, owned by Hubbard Realty. And that exchange would allow us to have contiguous land, and it's in an area where there may be a future spur up to the mountain-to-sea trail. So we, generally, we recommend no net loss of parkland. In this case, it will be a net gain. It gets rid of a piece of land that's isolated as an island and only served by a 10-foot access easement, and it would allow us to pick up this other piece of property in exchange. So staff would recommend approval of this.
Okay. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. No one has signed up. Does anyone want to speak in support of this? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Now, declare the public hearing closed.
We approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. Grubbs. Second by Mr. Leake. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a few questions on this.
Sure.
I had some specific questions about the conservation network's buffer areas and whether that was still part of the, I know that's separate from the city, but is that still contemplated, that there was going to be these buffer areas purchased as well?
Yes. Chair, members of the board, William Royson, Regretion Park Director, 100 East First Street, Suite 407. As part of this agreement, the Conservation Fund would purchase two 100-foot easements, indeed those, over to the city at the closing of this deal.
Okay, so that's still contemplated?
Yes.
And you still feel confident you'll be able to access the potential mountains-to-sea trail route through that property that would be where the Beltway interchange is?
Yes, the Conservation Fund engaged the landowner that, whose property abuts the property that we would be gaining, and the initial conversations and thoughts are that he would be willing to grant us an easement through his property for a soft surface trail to provide access to that spur of the mountains-to-sea trails.
Okay, and the fact that a road is going through there is not going to be a hindrance to getting access?
You mean the Beltway?
Yes.
It's going to have some impact on our park, but it's far enough, far enough north that we don't think it, we would lose our ability to have access to a spur of the mountains-to-sea trails, or would it impede any development for our park?
All right, thank you. That is my question. I had one other question about the zoning that maybe Gary, or about the Hubbard property that would be gaining this new piece of land. Is it, it's zoned MUS? Is that correct?
I'd like to speak to that. The piece is zoned RS20 that they're gaining, and the surrounding land is zoned MUS.
Right.
So they would...
That's what I was wondering about. What kind of constraints are on the MUS?
Well, the MUS is, of course, special use zoning. I'm not sure if that's two-phase or single-phase, that's already designed out, but to add this and incorporate it, they can add it to their design if they're using this part for single-family residential, or they may do some kind of amendment and ask to rezone the RS20 to MUS as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? We have a motion for approval. Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Next item on your agenda is zoning docket F-1577. Petitioners, Whedle Properties LLC, and the site is 10.1 acres, 01 acres, located on the east side of Chickasha Drive, north of Robin Hood Road. And the request is a general use rezoning request with no site plan from AG Agricultural to RS20. Of course, AG requires a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet, lot widths of 150 feet in width, and the RS20 are 20,000 square foot in size. This is Legacy's Growth Management Plan. It's located just northeast of Lewisville in the yellow suburban neighborhoods, Growth Management Area 3, just west of the future Beltway. And this is the subject property there, shown, highlighted in yellow. It is currently undeveloped, predominantly wooded. The green area is the 500-foot mailing radius notification area. The site is on the eastern side of Chickasha Drive between Yadkinville Road and Robin Hood Road. The lavender color located to the right, to the east, is the proposed Beltway, and just north of the site there will be a future connection from Chickasha to Tomahawk Road. The staff report mentioned accidentally that that was going to be an interchange. That will not be an interchange, but it will be a connection there to Tomahawk. The interchange will be further down at Robin Hood. So much of the surrounding property is zoned agricultural, but as you'll see in another image, and right now, you can see that there is RS20 zoning directly to the northeast, and so further RS20 zoning southwest of the subject property there, which is located within Lewisville. Aerial photographs showing the development pattern, some water bodies further to the west of the subject property, again, mostly heavily wooded. And these are the area plans. This is a 2012 West Suburban Area Plan, recommended single-family residential in yellow for all of this entire area, up to a density of five units per acre. And this is the 2018 draft suburban, West Suburban Area Plan, which recommends generally the same but a little bit more dense, up to eight units per acre, single-family detached residential development. This is out on the site. The subject property is located to the right. This is looking north on Chickasha. This is directly south of the site, and this is looking across the street. I did not mention earlier, public water is available to this property, but public sewer is nowhere near available. So even though the area plan recommends maybe RS7, maybe RS9 zoning there, there's really no sewer around, so they would need to rely, whatever development takes place in this general area, on septic systems. Just backing out a little bit at a different scale, you can see the subject property again there in yellow, and in light blue, you see the AG zoning in the surrounding area. But it's really kind of a pocket of AG zoning in this area. On this portion of Chickasha, it certainly does have the flavor of a rural area, but it's really surrounded by much denser zoning. You have RS20 zoning directly to the north and west, RS9 zoning a little bit further to the east, RS20 zoning southwest, and RS9 zoning along Yadkinville Road. And the Glad Acres area is just further south here, across from Chickasha. So it is zoned AG, but there's a real, much more intense surrounding zoning around this property. So staff really sees no compelling reason why this and the surrounding properties, particularly with availability of public water, Growth Management Area 3, that it should remain agricultural. So again, it's located within a pocket surrounded by denser zoning districts. It's located within the suburban neighborhoods, Growth Management Area 3, and is served with public water. And the RS20 district is consistent with the subject request, and it's adjacent to other RS20 zone property. And staff sees no negative transportation-related issues to this request. Certainly, we are aware that there has been a dramatic increase in traffic in this general area over the last 10 to 15 years, and that will probably increase. Brookberry is not completely built out. You've got Reagan High School. You've got two other schools coming online there, and new subdivision activity. But as I mentioned also in the staff report, we project about 1,200 to 1,300 trips per day going down, up and down Chickasha now, and that road can handle about 15,000 cars per day. So it is, it has increased in traffic in the general area, and we're not saying that there's not some bottlenecks at some of the major intersections. But overall, from this particular request, going from AG to RS20, staff does not see a significant traffic issue related to this. So staff's recommendation is for approval, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Any questions, staff, at this time? Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
This is a public hearing. Mr. Carter?
Alex Carter, 503 High Street, Winston-Salem, North Carolina 27101. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I just have a few brief comments to talk in addition to the information that Gary provided you, talk a little bit about some of Lewisville's plans as well. They have an interest in this corridor as well. The jurisdiction for Lewisville is just to the west of this site, and they have a plan that they've just posted that shows the existing zoning. Our site is in the dark green here in the center. You can see the AG around it. The lighter yellow surrounding that is the RS20, RS9, then along the west and south, and then RS30, further west. You can see the proposed corridor, excuse me, the proposed transportation corridor to the east, and you can also see some of the streams that are located, in particular ones in northeast corner of this property. And then this is their future land use map. Our site is here in the black outline, and you can better see their conservation corridor. The light green for them is proposed as what they call rural residential, and the lighter yellows are suburban residential. So again, from their perspective as well, just to kind of follow up the comments about this whole area is really forecasted and planned to be residential in nature. There is no sewer available, public sewer. The nearest sewer is to the south, about 3,000, 3,500 feet away. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, sir. Anyone else like to speak in support of this? Then we'll turn to the opposition. Mr. Alsop?
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Bob Alsop, 940 Kinley Circle, Winston-Salem. Appreciate what the board does and the planning staff and the opportunity to speak. And I've been writing notes for weeks, and I've just decided to go off script, which is these days extremely dangerous. So I would just like to speak from the heart. My family's own land off Chickasha for 50 years, soon to be the fourth generation. With the advent of increased development in the area, I've spent many, many, many weeks and hours visiting local residents, people who've lived in the area 60, 70 years. I've watched the development of the Robin Hood corridor. I've watched the school, Jefferson, the proposed new school at the junction of Lewisville-Viana and Robin Hood. I've watched the Brookberry development. I've watched the phenomenal increase in traffic congestion. All of us are affected by any change in our backyard, and I know that's not very useful these days to comment on, but it makes you think. And the journey here, the big picture, is I know the area cold. We've had the privilege of being in that environment for years. What I'm seeing is a change that I'm not sure we're prepared for. I respect greatly all of your comments. I profoundly disagree with the comment on traffic handling. I've spent many hours the last three weeks going in the morning between 7:00 and 9:00 to the Brookberry School, off of Brookberry to the Lewisville-Vanna Elementary School. I've tried to get to town between 7:00 and 9:00 from the Robin Hood West to Muddy Creek and back into the city limits, back into the South Creek Parkway area. I've tried to go down Yadkinville into the Reynolda area, and the bottom line is, I respect the development. We are in a major crunch of handling the traffic. Now we have 60 more acres going on Glad Acres with 92 proposed units. We have a new middle school going up at the previously mentioned site. I use this as an opportunity, as a sounding board, to ask that we take a deep breath. With that proposed zoning and growth management area, are we headed in the right direction till we've really thought through where's the traffic going? From a small point of view, small picture is, those of us on Chickasha, my neighbor, Bob, is going to speak in a second, purely personal thoughts, we're not representing each other. The question is, can Chickasha handle more development? It's already a cut-through. You go out there, the average speed isn't 45. It's probably between 45 and 70 people's speed. There's road rage. There's short tempers. There's huge backup at the Lewisville-Vanna Elementary School when there's pickup and drop-off. And now we're going to increase the numbers and the density of traffic, and I think my message is simply to say from a personal statement, there will be change, and people need places to live. We really have not adapted to the safety, the access of schools, the access of work, the access to town. Where are we going to address some of that? I went to many of the meetings with Glad Acres at the Lewisville Planning Board, and really, it's just not addressed. It really was not a topic of very extensive conversation. So I say that in effort, if no other reason, to take a deep breath and examine, what are we doing? And can more development on the Chickasha area really be handled in a way that will make the public safe, the neighborhood safe? And if nothing else, it made me read the Legacy 30 Plan and the County Farmland Protection Plan, and the themes are unbelievably redundant: safety, quality of life, balanced development, balanced agriculture with our day-to-day city and workaday lives, and safety of children. So with that in mind, I simply wanted to have it recorded. I'm very concerned about the ability to handle the congestion, the traffic, and the safety of those involved. Appreciate your time.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Biskaborn?
Thank you for letting me talk tonight. My name is Bob Biskaborn. My wife and I are here. We probably have been more impacted by this rezoning than anyone. We live immediately on the south side of this piece of property, have known the owners of the property. We've been there for years, and just wanted to mention a few things that probably may or may not be aware of. I don't know if it's required to have an environmental impact statement for all the animals and the wildlife. This is a very unique piece of property out there. On Dr. Alsop's property are some little, small lakes, and the animals, it's a huge population that live down in the valley towards where the Beltway will be in the future, but they cross over several times a day. And we're talking deer and coyotes and fox and turkeys, and we watch them, right? They go through our property, right alongside the property, they go to the lake, and if you've ever had an opportunity to watch a whole herd of deer go to a lake and drink, and then they go back to the refuge of the forest again, back and forth all day long. With the development, I think we're going to just disrupt that. These animals will not be able to leave their refuge, go across Chickasha Drive and out across and get there to drink and go back again with all the housing development. I think that that's just going to put a real buffer on those animals. One neighbor that can't be here tonight has spent years feeding the animals out there, almost year-round. So they're used to living in that area, and they're safe, and they're protected, and there's no hunting, and it's just an amazing theater to watch the animals out there. And so I just bring that up, that it looks like that that's probably going to be disrupted. And I don't know how you protect it. I don't know what you do, but it's, I see it's going to go away. And the other thing that we see, it's been kind of a checks and balances of the nature, is they, there's quite a few coyotes that live in that area, and... is they, there's quite a few coyotes that live in that area, and they have kept the deer population very manageable. The deer population right in this area that we see several times a day are anywhere from about 11 to 17 in this family that... Right on the other side of us, on the south side, is Hunter Hills Equestrian Center. They have a huge population of horses. They run it as a business. They run summer camps. They do riding camps. They do riding lessons over there. They do, it's a rescue area for horses that have been abused. They have ducks and cats. Their concern is, and I bring that tonight, is should this development move forward and the deer population be driven away, the coyotes are going to go somewhere, and they're concerned about, out in their pastures, they keep big watering troughs for the horses. The horses are in the pastures all night long, and they're concerned that the coyotes will migrate that way and start attacking their horses. So I just wanted that on the record, too. It's a very big concern for them, that to get water, they'll come and use those watering troughs, and then they're going to have, have the horses there to attack. So one other thing that's very unique about this area, and I mentioned is, I don't know if you've ever seen it, seen one, but they're called alligator turtles. They're very prehistoric-looking. They live down in the woods behind us. They come up on a regular basis. They cross this piece of property. They go to Dr. Alsup's lakes. They drink. They tell me they can go about two weeks between watering, then they come back across the land again. Sometimes I see them out in the road. They're just the most god-awful-looking animal you ever saw. They're very prehistoric. They're very old. I go with welding gloves, and I pick them up out of the road and get them off to the side of the road. They bite like crazy, and researching them on the internet, they say that there's only a few remaining. They're in this portion of the mid-Atlantic. In 2014, they went on the endangered species list, and this is one of the few places they live anymore, and they go back and forth there on a regular basis. And I just also wanted to build on the doctor's comments about the traffic out there. We have, at the end of Chickasha is an elementary school. At the other end of Chickasha is going to be another new school. Right down Robin Hood is a elementary school. Right down Metal Arc is another school. The traffic has just absolutely overwhelmed the area because they use Chickasha as a cut-through to get between Yadkinville Road and Robin Hood. And the only other way to cross through is Olivet Church Road, which is further east. What is concerning is it happened about four or five years ago. In the afternoons, the parents go to collect their children, and the schools don't have that kind of off-site parking, and so they stop on the road. They just park on the road. The state highway department has put signs up there, and they didn't last any time. They shut down the road. And here, a few years ago, right around the corner is the volunteer fire department. They were needed, and they couldn't get through. The road shut down both directions. Everybody parked in the road. They had to leave the Vienna Volunteer Fire Department. They had to turn around amongst all these cars, go back out to the Yadkinville Road, the old highway, down to Olivet Church Road, come all the way back around, back up Robin Hood. 19 minutes later, they got to where they needed to go, where normally it would have taken them about a minute. That's happening every day out there, and it's just going to get worse. And here, we fussed about this a few years ago. The state highway department came in. They widened Chickasha Drive 12 inches, and then they raised the speed limit 10 miles an hour. So now the traffic, like the doctor said, boils down through there. Instead of not doing the speed limit, they're probably doing 55, 60 mile an hour flying down through there, and then, you know, just to even add more traffic onto that road is a huge problem. Thank you very much. That's my concerns, and I'll leave it to you.
Thanks, sir. Is there any time left? I can't imagine.
Two minutes.
Is it? Okay. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir. Got two minutes left. Come give us your name and address, please, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. I happen to live just the other side of that property, off the end of Tommy Hawk Road.
Give us your name and address, please, sir.
Jerry Loefman, 5856 Tommy Hawk Road, which is the very end, the end of Tommy Hawk Road on the map, coming through that property. Property's been in the family for 170 years, and we'd sort of like to keep some of that forest rule and stuff. But my main, biggest concern I'm seeing is when you get on the zone, new property you're talking about there, there is a creek branch that runs through there. It runs all the time, and I see these turtles and these deers and everything all down there, too. But my concern is, it's a slope up. It's maybe 15 feet up above the branch on that side of, in the middle of this property that drops down to a lower-level property. I'm concerned about runoff and what's going to happen with a lot of septic tanks and what's going to happen to that branch and watering creek that's there, along with the animals they mentioned. They mentioned the traffic on Chickasha. It's terrible on Olivet Church Road in the evening, too. When you get to the end of Tommy Hawk Road, you might wait for 20 cars to pass before you, you know, get on Olivet Church Road to get out of the traffic. So traffic's getting heavy everywhere out in that area, and I'd like to point that out. You know, if they want to do a low residential up there, I don't have a problem. Something could be controlled a little better, but I wish they were sitting up putting that much up there, that much traffic in there. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else like to speak? Senator Warren, I've declared the public hearing closed. Any comments or questions?
I had a question.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, the gentleman for the petitioner who spoke?
Mr. Carter.
Mr. Carter. Sorry.
Alex Carter.
Mr. Carter, I had a question about the plan you showed. Was that a Louisville plan?
It is. So they recently, that is their comprehensive plan that they recently posted for this area.
And it includes area in Forsyth County outside the jurisdiction of Louisville?
That's correct.
Okay. And could you, would you mind putting that back up?
Do they still have some ETJ out there?
No, they, my understanding Louisville doesn't have any ETJ. They do, whenever they plan for that area, they do it in consultation with our staff. I believe Kirk Erickson worked in conjunction with them on their plan to try to get them to mesh up as good as they could.
I was wondering about those long green areas there that you called something having to do with conservation?
Yeah, they call these conservation areas on their legend. It's a little difficult to see on this one, though. So those are basically the streams and buffers around the streams, areas that may contain hydroxyls or wetlands and, or steep slopes and sensitive areas.
And the, what was the recommendation for those? That they still be residentially developed but at a less density, or not developed at all?
No, those will be conserved for...
Okay.
For, as buffers to the stream areas.
I just want to make the comment that, that some of this type of planning might address some of the concerns that the residents raised. It's not in our area plan. It's not in the West Suburban Area Plan, but that's the kind of thing that I think would be appropriate to put in the West Suburban Plan, that that type of recommendation that would potentially conserve some of these areas that the deer are in.
Keep in mind, most of those areas are already in the UDO as off-limits for development because they are floodplains and associated buffer areas with those streams. Depending on the type of stream they are, they already have a prescribed buffer. You have to stay off of them. So, you know, I, I think that's, I think that's probably something that we probably could look at in the future, including, but again, most of that is already, at least for the narrowness of that one, would be covered within what's currently in the UDO as far as what would be allowed to be developed.
What do you find in the development of the rural areas like this is those corridors are pretty much maintained by those requirements. They're not always interconnected, but they'll still have a way of moving along these corridors. They'll, they'll get more concentrated in a narrower corridor, but typically, there's going to remain some way for the wildlife to still move and exist.
As long as people follow the regulations and the book, correct?
Right. Yeah.
Yeah. I, I was just thinking that if there was something more planned out, that we could make an effort to preserve some of these areas, especially the continuity, the continuity there.
Can a deer get to that area? Yes, sir. Any other comments, questions, anyone? I'm going to care to make a motion.
Make a motion for approval?
Motion, Ms. Smith, in a second. I'll second the motion. Discussion?
I just, I'm really torn on this one. This is, this is a tough one for me because I, it's difficult to watch as the few pockets of more rural areas continue to kind of disappear, and we face the same thing on the eastern side of the county. And I, I understand the concern about the traffic as well. It's unfortunate that it appears development in this particular pocket has kind of outpaced the, the traffic or the, the road system. Eventually, I think that will catch up, but it's kind of a chicken or an egg situation. But we, we do have these growth management areas and these, these area plans for a reason. And, and I go back to conversations we've had before where we've kind of said, okay, we're doing our higher-level planning for an area when we're putting those plans in place. So it's difficult for me to then tell a developer that they can't rely on those plans. So I'm just, I'm really, there's a, there's a lot of friction there for me between those two, two issues.
Yeah, I, I do feel some of that friction with this. I think when you look at the overall area and what's in it, I don't think that our zoning process is appropriate to restrict a property owner's use if they meet the requirement. I think there is a real need for conservation, and I think if there's anybody who wants to, to be active in that, there are organizations and ways to say, okay, we need to preserve some of this land. I don't think the individual zoning process is where we do that on that scale with that.
And I agree with you on that.
I agree that it's just, I'm, I'm a country girl myself, so I, I agree with that, but I don't think it's our role on an individual rezoning case to make that restriction on the use of the property.
Fair enough. I agree, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, you made some very good points. My issue with this is that, and Ms. Alsup brought up legacy, and in legacy, we talk about preserving the rural character of, of the county. And I, I don't see that we have a good mechanism for doing that in our, in our UDO, and that's something that I would like to see us look at as we do, when we do a new comprehensive plan, to try to put some meat in there where we can find some real practical solutions. We, we did the farmland preservation plan, but all, most of that is voluntary. So there really isn't anything to practically preserve what we have left. And we've had several cases recently of ag land going to residential. This, I think, presents some unique issues just because of the configuration of, of the land around it, and it, I think that, that the, the argument is a little stronger for, for conversion to residential here. But in general, I think we, I would like to see us look at, at finding some ways to preserve agricultural land.
Yeah, I think the, the Beltway coming through that area is an influence to, as far as the future of that area goes.
And they're restricting a property owner's right sometime. You know, that's something I think about a lot. You know, you purchase property, you move into an area, there has to be some foresight that this area is going to eventually change. It's not going to remain the same, so.
Rightly or wrongly, you can consider it what you may, but keep in mind that while this property is zoned ag in the legacy growth management area, it's not in the rural policy area. It's in GMA III, and in order to maintain consistency amongst all of our area plans, we have the low-density provision, which is currently zero to five units per acre. And, you know, the determinant on that is to analyze what's in the area and also whether or not sewer is available. And in this case, sewer's not available. Septic is. If you look at most of the area around it, although there are a couple of pockets of RS 9, obviously RS 9 from a sewer standpoint would not make sense. So in analyzing those things, that's why we felt like that the RS 20 zoning would be the most appropriate here.
It's probably unlikely you'll get, with a stream on the property and some of the other topography and things, that you're actually going to get a house every 20,000 square feet of property.
And I'm, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the analysis has, whether or not they've even done a septic analysis at this point.
And that's beyond what we got here, but the density of it, I think, is, is another factor in my supporting this.
Any other comments, any board members? We have a motion for approval. Those in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. All right. I guess we're to staff report, Mr. Carter?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first thing I have on here is Paul. I don't think Paul had a chance to talk, to speak to everyone before he left, but he had a meeting he had to be at in Hickory at 6:00, so that's why he made a hasty exit after the consent agenda, or as part of the consent agenda, actually. Another item for staff report is, we continued two cases today. We already have, there were four cases that were submitted in for pre-submittal for June, and the deadline for general use and limited-use cases would be on Monday, so, you know, we may have some more cases added to that. You ready for that? Yeah. Being handed out now is the information, I believe, that y'all, that the planning board requested at the last work session. This is the information that would be going to the Community Development, Housing and General Government Committee next Tuesday on UDO 283, and that is the text amendment that you considered several months ago dealing with multifamily in the HB and GO districts. Like I said, this will be going to committee next Tuesday, and I believe what, what the planning board talked about at the work session was getting this information and then analyzing it, and I believe the thought was to put that on as a discussion item for your May 24th work session. So if that's the consensus of the group, then that's kind of what we'll plan on.
I don't believe we'd asked for this. We'd known it was this much, but anyway.
It's, it's a lot of information. It was a lot of information for staff to gather and, and provide, but...
Who asked for this?
I believe y'all did. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, you asked to see it. The, the Community Development, Housing and General Government Committee actually asked for the information as part of, I believe they've considered it in work session two, three times now, and every time we got a little more information requested. So that's, that's the outcome of all those requests.
And did, I'm sorry, did you say it was coming up on the agenda next week?
It will be on the agenda on Tuesday. Paul's plan is to let them know that the planning board is going to be looking at this, at their, at your work session on the 24th, and kind of see where that goes. Like I said, I don't, they're going to take it up. I don't know whether they're going to make a decision at that point, whether or not they're going to perhaps wait for y'all to, if there's a reconsideration of your previous amendment based on all this information. I'm not exactly sure, but Paul is going to let them know at their meeting next Tuesday. And if anyone's interested in coming to that meeting, the meeting time has been moved up to 3:00 on next Tuesday instead of the regular time, which is 4:30, 4, 4?
4:30, I think.
Okay. So it's been moved to 3:00. The next item on the staff report is rolling right... The next item on the staff report is rolling right into your May work session. As you can see by the volume of information there, that's gonna be a big item, but we have a number of other items on there, so definitely plan for two hours. Um, we're gonna have the UDO consultant, Phase One, the update from the consultant on Phase One. In addition to that, on there will be a report and recommendation dealing with street standards that came off your work program, a report and recommendation dealing with consideration to changes to the Transportation Impact Statement study that is required for certain zoning cases of a certain size. There'll be a discussion of the infill standards and then that item and there are probably a couple other little miscellaneous items on there as well. So like I said, it's gonna be a full agenda.
Johnny, you still with us?
I'm still with you. You said plan for four hours?
Well, I said plan for two. Technically, I believe by your rules, it's a two-hour meeting, so I, you know, I'm not gonna say plan for more than that, but, uh, it probably could take more than that.
Inticipate some carryover.
Right. Um, just kind of an up, just kind of an update. At their meeting on Monday night, city council did approve UDO 284, which was the building material, um, requirements related to retail stores. And I believe the county's gonna be taking that up sometime in the next couple of weeks. I believe that item is getting pushed over to them, so I think they're gonna take it up before their budget, um, gets into full swing. Just a couple other items, just to let you know, this is a, kudos to some of our staff. The Employee Excellence Awards for 2017 are coming up in June. We kinda lag a little bit behind. We have two of our employees who are among the 12 finalists for Employee of the Year for specific categories and that's citywide. Just have two out of 12, out of 2,500 employees. That's pretty good. Couple more things, since Paul's not here, we can talk about this a little more freely. I'm sure he'll watch this on replay on TV 13, but, um, coming up, the end of July, of course, will be Paul's final days. And we have a couple of tentative dates. There'll be the city-county government reception, which is kind of the formal event, kinda what we call the cake and punch event. And that will be, that's tentatively scheduled for Friday, July 20th. And of course, you know, planning board, we want, we want planning board members there. We certainly want planning board members at the other event, which we tentatively have planned for Tuesday, Tuesday, July 31st, which is Paul's final day. And that's kind of a informal send-off that will be somewhere locally at a restaurant somewhere. So again, those dates are tentative, but that's kinda what we're looking for at this point.
We have an update on, or can we speak about the update on replacement or?
That's not up to me. That would be up to, um, the folks that are running, I believe, the assessment process.
Okay.
So I'm not sure exactly if, who the planning board's been communicating with on that, whether it's just been totally being run by the county and city deputy directors at this point or... Um, the city-county government will cover much of the cost of the send-off, the informal, I mean, yeah, the informal event we're planning on having, but we would welcome any contributions from staff and planning board members to help defray some of those expenses. And we'll send an email out with information later on in June, once some of that stuff gets buttoned up. And finally, Margaret has some info that she wants to share about a workshop that she recently attended in Greensboro.
Just, I'll be really quick. I went to a, to hear a speaker that the city of Greensboro had come named Chris Leinberger. He was very interesting. He's a developer. He's also in charge of the real estate program at University of Michigan. And I won't spend much time talking about what he talked about, but that was walkable communities. And he's, he's really national. He has a lot, he does a lot of marketing work. And his message was that people, young people, older people particularly, are demanding walkable communities. And then we, as a community, need to figure out how to build density and retrofit our existing areas, because if we don't get on board with that, we're gonna fall behind as a community. I thought it was a really important message. But I thought even more important to me was the purpose of this lecture is Greensboro is beginning their comprehensive plan and they're doing a series of community conversations. So they're bringing in speakers to get people talking and thinking about what they want the future of their community to be. So I just, it's a challenge I have to you all that, you know, we're talking about updating our comprehensive plan in probably three to four years, but maybe sometime in the next two to three years, what we're, what I think would be great for us to do is to do our own speaker series. Bring in speakers to, to get us thinking about that comprehensive plan. I would hope that we bring in people who challenge us, maybe even some controversial speakers, just to get us all thinking about what we really want in our future. So I would challenge you to, over the next few years, as you hear people, maybe in your professions, speak, kinda, you know, let us know those names. We can start generating a list of people. Um, what Greensboro did for Chris Leinberger was he had, did a community presentation one day and then it was actually a partnership with one of their development associate, development organizations. I don't know if it was the home builders or not, but he then spoke to developers at the, the next morning. And I would think that we could partner with people like the home builders, maybe the Neighborhood Alliance, maybe some of our health organizations to bring in speakers that their organizations would be interested in, as well as sort of general stuff for our community. So start listening to people, noting those downs and sharing that information with us so that we've got some people to turn to in the next couple of years if hopefully we do this kind of thing. Thanks.
That's, that's all I have.
Is that staff report? Board members, anything for the good of the order?
I have one question, please. Last meeting with the city council members, the goat farm on, so I was trying to figure out what happened there. Did it, did it pass? Did it get?
No, uh, the councilor for the ward put forth a substitute motion to continue it to their June meeting.
June 4th?
Yeah, June, yeah, whatever that first Monday in June is, June 4th, uh, where it will be considered again. Basically, they asked for the continuance to be able to solicit perhaps more input. They, the public hearing had been closed, but the motion allowed for the opportunity to reopen, reopen the public hearing if there were more folks there that had additional new information to share.
So when it goes before the council, they hear the same thing that we hear, I presume? Is that correct?
Oh, yes, although the, um, for the staff presentation, there were some technical issues with the presentation, so Paul actually had to wing it and do it verbally because the, the PowerPoint didn't load properly onto the new PC that was over there. But yes, they heard the same things that you heard. I believe there was probably more information that was shared by the, both the proponents and opponents because they had more folks of each at the meeting that got up and spoke. But the, the staff report was the same. All the information that was presented here was also included in the minutes that went to them.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, sir.
You, you can ask staff afterwards if you would like.
We'll be around afterwards. Okay. Ms. Smith?
Right, the motion to adjourn.
I think we agree with that.
Last time that you were not here for adjournment, we just sat there.